Waiting to be let in?
There are two more that are joining.
And I see that Mr. Morin's, at least his eye kind of showing him is muted. If we want to get that unmuted before we begin.
Okay.
He's having trouble with his video.
No, Stuart, Stuart's having, we, Stuart's having trouble with his video. We could see him earlier, but he couldn't see anything from us. But now it looks like he's bouncing in and out.
Mr. Garber, do you have us? Mr. Garber, are you there?
He's calling in Travis.
All right, well, I'll wait him on before we, we actually get going.
Stuart, can you hear us?
Mr. Wolf, I see his, yeah, his iPad.
Can y'all hear me?
All right, there you are.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna do it this way. I don't have anything on the screen, but I can hear y'all.
All right, if you can hear us, we can hear you. Just, you know, if you drop out, send somebody a text so that we know to get you back on.
Well, if I drop out, I'll just join by phone.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, well then I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Miskowski?
Here. All right, next, if everyone, please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next we have review and adoption of the meeting agenda. We do have an amended agenda to add a closed session. At the end, I don't think there were any other changes. I'll enter a motion on the meeting agenda.
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
All set.
With the amendment, right?
As a member of this.
Very good. Any more? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. To our public comment period, speakers will have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. Please state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin speaking. And if you are representing a group, please state so before you begin. I will open the public comment period. If you want to speak, please get into the chat. Mr. Wolf is in the chat right now. Your information and he'll unmute you. So we'll, we'll be patient with this, but those who wish to speak, please reach out directly to Mr. Wolf in the chat. And he will work on getting you unmuted. So the public comment period is open. I'll, I'll give us a couple of minutes here to see if we have people who signed up. And Mr. Wolf, if you could remind those on the phone how they raised their hand to be, to be seen as well if they wish to speak.
Let me double check, but I believe it is star nine. To raise your hand if you are calling in. Yes, that is correct. Star nine from your dialed in phone number will raise your hand. All right, Travis, we have one.
All right, go ahead.
They're still muted. They should be able to talk now, Travis.
Yes, the, the person that raised their hand, please go ahead. Phone number ending in seven, six, five, one. I'm not sure, Mr. Miskowski, they just lowered their hand.
Perhaps they were just testing the feature to see if it worked. All right. To, to that individual, if you, if you couldn't be heard, try, try again. Anybody else, please again, reach out to Mr. Wolf in the chat. And he'll get you unmuted. So I'm going to leave this open for another, another minute or two here while everybody has an opportunity that wants to speak to ask to be heard. I'm going to do one last 60 second call. So one minute, anybody that wants to be heard, please reach out to Mr. Wolf in the chat or do star nine on your phone and we'll get you in the queue to speak. But I don't have anybody else in a minute. We'll go ahead and move on.
Mr. Miskowski, we do have one person that's raised their hand.
Just in the nick of time. All right. Yes, let's unmute it. And that's a phone number ending in three, zero, seven, nine.
Correct.
You recognize if you wish to begin speaking.
Yes, sir. My name is Raymond Carter and I'm in the West Point District. My question is about the last meeting, the special meeting, you talked about having an advisory board. And I'd like to know what the status of that is and also, I would like to strongly oppose this new zoning proposal that's going on. The survey does not take into account individuals that are low income families that can only afford one acre or less land or give younger families a starter home. Basically, in my mind, in my opinion, is discrimination against those personnel that are seeking to buy their first home. In regards to the question of the proposal being that land be minimized to three acres as a, as the smallest parcel and also the family division of having a waiting period. First of all, the personnel that proposed this don't pay my taxes. And they didn't buy my land. And I'm pretty sure there are many others that feel that way as well. So everybody should have the right to be able to buy a house and to own land regardless of the size that they can afford. Everybody has, should have the opportunity to get at least a starter home. Regardless of the size of their property or the home they can afford. And, and I'm going to close with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Wolf, I think I see another one that has raised their hand.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yes, can y'all hear me?
We, yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, this is Jay in Mills. I'm in the fifth district. I reside at three, three, five, Heron Creek Road. First, I'd like to commend the board for what they did in that special meeting by throwing out the erroneous reassessments that were done by bright minds. I have several parcels and none of mine were done correctly. Matter of fact, when I went down and appealed them to the appraiser, it was quite obvious no one had ever visited the properties. Next, I would like to say, I, I know that y'all have voted in the meet, in that meeting, you did what you had to do, you followed the proper steps. You, and you will be appointing an advisory board. My suggestion is that advisory board you suggest encompasses a cross section of the county. It takes in all aspects of it. They're, they're all those that are developers, they're all those that are landowners, they're all those that are farmers. And I suggest that you appoint someone from each of those segments and land and homeowners. And I, that, that is my suggestion, that this board be a cross section of this county. That's what this county deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Wolf, is anybody else?
No, sir.
All right, well, I will go ahead then, and we will close the public comment period. To discussion of, of, you know, the, you know, any advisory board regarding the reassessment. I stated in the last meeting that I thought that was a good idea. I continue to think that's a good idea, but we are in early days with that of trying to you know, figure out what the duties of such a board should be and, 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 you know, what that board should be empowered with and how it should be impounded. So, you know, be patient. It's only been about a week. You know, we're, we're trying to figure out what we think is the best way forward with that. But we, we will be moving forward with it. Next up, we've got consent agenda. Are there any changes to discussion, the consent agenda? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion that we accept that consent agenda is written.
Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. All right, now we begin our presentation. We have eight A recognition of James R. Nestor Jr., Sheriff Walton. Mr. Wolf, if we could get Mr. Walton unmuted, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to read this resolution on your behalf to retire Captain James Nestor. Think he is on the line or on Zoom here. But I'll begin with Resolution 2110, Resolution of Appreciation, Captain James R. Nestor Jr. Whereas Captain James R. Nestor Jr. served 25 years in the King William Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff from 1995 until 2020. In 2001, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant and in 2006 promoted to chief deputy, serving in the capacity, in that capacity until his retirement. Whereas Captain James R. Nestor Jr. was the first deputy sheriff in Kingwood County to be certified as a crime prevention specialist by the Department of Criminal Justice Services. Whereas Captain James R. Nestor Jr. also served as a general instructor and radar instructor at the Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy, instructing many new recruits. And whereas Captain James R. Nestor Jr. has been positive, been a positive representation of the sheriff's office in the community and served as a liaison with the many criminal justice partners to include surrounding jurisdictions. And now therefore be it resolved that the Kingwood County Board of Supervisors expresses its appreciation to Captain James R. Nestor Jr. for his valuable contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Kingwood County. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the sense of this board of supervision on this matter shall be conveyed to Captain Nestor and shall be spread upon the media minutes of said board supervisors than this 22nd day of February, 2021.
Very good. Thank you, Sheriff. We do have Captain Nestor on the line. I'd offer him some moments to speak if he would wish to, if Mr. Wolf can reach him and get him unmuted.
I think I'm there.
Very good.
So sorry, I'm going between two Zoom meetings. I got one, another one going too. So I'm going back and forth. Apologize. No, I'd like to thank the board. Thank Sheriff Walton. Thank the citizens of King William County. I did spend almost 30 years in law enforcement, decided back in, in October that to, to hang it up. And I've enjoyed it. I've met a lot of people. Hope to continue to stay in touch with a lot of those people. And again, I thank you guys.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much and enjoy retirement. And, and thank you for, for 25 great years. You were, you were an asset to us and we look forward to, to having you around with other opportunities to serve.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sir.
Okay. Next, under eight, we've got eight B introduction of the newly elected commissioner of the revenue. Ms. Funkhouser is on the line with us. Good evening, Coria. We'll go ahead and get you unmuted and make an introduction.
Um, good evening, Board. I wanted to say I'm very happy so far with my first two weeks at King William County. I'm feeling a little bit less overwhelmed, but still overwhelmed, but not too bad. So presently, my staff is working on processing business license and real estate tax relief applications, which are due by March 1st. Since I last spoke to the board on the February 10th meeting, my staff has approved 87 more business licenses and 31 more applications for elderly tax relief. We've also received two applications for veterans' real estate tax relief and also for state income tax returns. So the next two weeks will be very busy for my office as the March 1st due date approaches because we will accept things as on time with a postmark of March 1st. Especially I'll be out the and new commissioner training Wednesday through Friday of this week. This afternoon, my office did participate in a Zoom meeting with Jennifer Ruckstella with VGSI concerning the new vision software for real estate assessments that the county will soon implement. After informing Ms. Ruckstella of the canceled reassessment due to the numerous era errors, Ms. Ruckstella said that the vision software can initiate a direct mailer. And this would be a one-page form mailed to each property owner containing the current parcel information. And the owner would be instructed to return the form certifying the information is correct or to correct any errors directly on the form before returning it. This might be something that the board may want to consider as a short-term solution to correct any real estate errors before the next reassessment contract is awarded and reassessment finalized. Then once the board makes a definite decision about if and when the real estate will be moving back into the Commissioner of Revenue's office, I will need to contact Ms. Ruckstella to arrange training for myself and my staff with, on the new vision software. I've also had citizens contact me about being on a citizens review board. And I told them that, that's something the board will need to discuss in a future meeting. Okay? Also, the treasurer and I have some questions and concerns regarding how our respective salaries were determined relative to the comp or minimums given the county's history of supplementing these offices and the long-term participation of these offices with the county's personnel policy. There seems to be some confusion as how the salaries for the newly elected officers were determined. And we're not just asking for ourselves, but also for future hires. We need to know if we are limited to the comp or minimums of new hires or we can offer new hires an appropriate market-based salary. I recognize that this is an unusual situation for the county based on the longevity of its constitutional officers. And I will be consulting with, you know, the Commissioners Association, how these transitions have occurred in the past with localities that have participated with their localities, personnel policies, and I would ask the board to do the same. I mean, we want to work with the county administration to develop policies and our recommendations to handle this matter in the future, just not for new constitutional officers, but for new hires in the constitutional officers' offices. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If they have any questions or anything that they wanted to bring up?
Oh, I do, I do like the, the software capability of mailing. That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I was very impressed with that when she mentioned that. I thought, yeah, that's my, something we can use to just help in the short term or get, if there are so many mistakes in the real estate book to get them corrected rather quickly.
That was one of the things that was supposed to have been done with the last company. They were supposed to put hang tangents on people's doors and that's what the previous assessment before that did to let people put on the tag if there were things that had been changed or something. But like I said, nobody even got those tags. Like I said, they heard people.
I certainly didn't get one.
I never got one either. I got a little postcard that said I didn't need to do anything. Everything was, was taken care of. I'm like, well, that wasn't right. But yeah, that sounds good, Ms. Funkhouser. Thank you very much. And then thank you for your insights and telling us everything that's going on. That's, it shows a transparency with the departments now, and I appreciate that a whole lot.
I am hoping in the future that I can give, you know, get to the by the due date to include like a memo in your board packet. So I don't have to just read everything and I could just say the highlights. But, you know, there's just so much right now. Yeah, I'm just trying to keep my head above water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, to the, Ms. Funkhouser, real quick, to the mailing, I know that there are some localities that do an annual mailing for tangible personal property. You know, to any cars that you have purchased, sold, trailer, etc., to make sure that we've got an accurate count of, of those types of things. And, you know, also take care of the, of people to do the high mileage form. Just something, if we're looking at mailing, this might be something else to, to look into to try to get that side of the books also. You know, keep that up to date with the vehicles that are coming in and out and stuff like that.
Well, you know, my office has a fob that connects to like, gives us access to unload DMV records every month. And that's how we update the personal property tax. And then I don't, obviously I'm not in the office and the county administration building. But I did see something with that audit report, how the property tax returns weren't mailed to each resident. But the county did an exemption that we're not required to do that anymore. And they may decide to adopt it and say every other year. I mean, the form is available that anybody can submit at any time they want. But we do get the information from the DVMV every month.
Okay. And then, yeah, I, I think we need to look at, you know, as far as the salaries go, a lot of those policies have been in place for, you know, a very long time, predate even me and Mr. Greenwood. So, yeah, I think we need to get with our, our HR and our finance and try to, you know, dig up what's the, the policy had been, what the justification for it was, and make sure that we've got something that's justifiable and consistent for, for both your office and Ms. Bancroft's office, for both your, you know, salaries as, as the heads of those offices and then your ability to make competitive offers to, to hires as you get in. So that's need to sort through and really kind of get into what we were doing. Was it right? Was it justifiable? If so, you know, what we need to do to continue that. And if something needs to change, what we need to do there. So we need to work on those, work on those policies.
No, you know, I have, there's a Commissioners Association for the whole state and they have been so helpful with information and offering me help and guidance. And I'm sure that there's instances, you know, of this happening in other localities and I can, you know, have, take some time and get that information, how it's been handled otherwise. But you do need to offer not, you know, for new hires, a competitive rate. And we need to know that we'll be able to do that if, you know, we're in the position to hire in our office. And if there was a standard policy, it would make it, you know, easier.
I agree. Anyone for Ms. Funkhouser? Anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Funkhouser?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right, very good. Well, we, we look forward to continuing these important conversations and working with you. Thanks for being willing to be on tonight.
Thank you.
And next we have Mary C. Bancroft, our newly elected treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Thank you for having me again. First off, I'm like Corina, two weeks into the opposition. Yeah, to say it's overwhelming is a little bit of an understatement. I feel like that every day I discover something new, another challenge. However, I've already stood firm on some instances, on some processes that will provide the county with some interest and penalties that were due. In particular, I had one citizen mail their payment in October. We still hadn't gotten it. Wanted to know if I would waive the interest and penalty. I decided not to for various reasons. That's a $4,000 interest and penalty that we should be receiving on that. So I, I don't take it lightly, but I do stand my ground. I have been sitting with the Lancaster County Treasurer. She is my mentor. She's been there for 14 years. I have been sitting with the Lancaster County Treasurer. She is my mentor. She's been there for fourteen years. She is a wealth of knowledge, and I love that she's there for me. She's coming tomorrow and Thursday as well. She's been very surprised about some of the things in the office as well. And that's a little bit alarming to me that when someone of fourteen years is scratching her head and her eyes are about popping out of her head, it's just very, it makes things even more challenging. But she was very relieved that I was there. She immediately saw that I do have the accounting background. I fully understood how everything works as far as that goes. We did have the state audit, and that went well. We passed that. The exit audit is on hold because the accounts have not been settled since September the thirtieth. She and I both are having a very hard time in making sense of what has taken place or not taken place. We had to skip past the October one and we'll come back and revisit it, and I started on the November one and have been working very diligently on that. I don't know what to say. I'm just, it's very disheartening to see what had not been done in that office. Let's see, I likely will not fill the chief deputy position. I want to, I want to say, and I can't say this enough, but the two girls that are in that office, Abby Carlton and Kim Lewis, they are the stars in that office, and thank God for them, because I don't know what I would do without them. They are so knowledgeable, and they, they don't hesitate to pitch in and find what they can find out and learn. And that's another thing, too. They didn't get some cross-training in some areas that they really needed it in, but I discovered the reason why they didn't get the cross-training was because the person to do it didn't have the knowledge to do it. How that happened, I'm not sure. I piggyback on what Karina said as far as the salary. You know, I come to the county with over twenty years of county experience, and that is really what is needed in this position. That's a huge value, but my company is still trying to get me to stay. They feel like, don't you want to, you know, stay? And I was like, no, I can't, I can't. But it was an understanding that the compensation for these positions was a certain salary set, because that's all that we knew. We were not aware at the time that it was split that the the state paid a portion and then the county submitted, a county supplemented the other amount. So I already was coming on board knowing that I was going to be going backwards a little bit in salary, but it was worth it to me to get our county to where we needed to be. However, I learned that I would be going even more backwards in salary because there wasn't a guarantee on the compensation from the county. I understand that there were certifications that have been obtained by my predecessor. But I'm going to tell you, I'm just going to be very honest with you. It doesn't seem that those certifications benefited my predecessor's abilities in the treasurer's office as witnessed by the inadequacies found in the office. So I would really like to think that you all would give great consideration to the compensation that has been done for years. I believe Karina and I come to the table with a whole lot more determination and integrity and willingness to get things where they need to be, more so than our predecessors. I don't know. I can't speak to the predecessor in the Commission of Revenue, but I can in the Treasurer's Department. I've got some notes. Let me just see here. Yeah, I think I've covered a lot. Yeah, just a lot of work to do, and I'm up for the challenge, but I can't really say when we will have that exit audit completed. I just don't know at this point. So I think, yeah, that's about it for right now.
Mary Sue?
Yes.
Did I understand you to say that the exit audit from October was not completed? Did you say that?
The exit audit has not been completed. That is correct.
From October? From when Mr. Witt left? Did you say that?
Yes. Because the accounts have not been settled. They were not settled. The it was repeatedly stated, well, we're just going to let the new treasurer do that. We're going to let the new treasurer do that. We're going to let the new treasurer do that. And no attempt was made past September thirtieth to balance those books.
But when, when Mr. Witt left and Marie Wilson took over, it was an exit audit done, and it was notarized, I thought.
Well, but there's an exit audit from, from what, from the time that she was there until the time I arrived.
Yes.
That has not been completed.
Yes, I understand that, but I thought you had said that the exit audit in October was not done either.
Well, the rec, the accounts have not been settled since September thirtieth. And maybe I missed, maybe I might have misstated that, but the exit audit from the time that Marie was interim treasurer until I started, nothing has been settled from that time. So we cannot.
So, so what, what you're asking, and Karina asking for is basically something that was given to the previous Commissioner of Revenue, the previous treasurer, that was basically the increase in salary was because of their certifications, correct?
That's my understanding. That's, I can't say that that is a fact. That is an understanding.
So my question is, if if your salary is adjusted, and then you obtain these certifications, will you then come back and ask us for more money? I would have liked to have thought that both of y'all would have done a little bit of homework prior to running for office.
I've never been a government employee, so I did discuss with the treasurer of the Culpeper County Office, who's a friend of mine, and he had advised me to but only like a couple of days before the election about how it worked, and I did not know that, but yeah, I did find that out, but I didn't realize that. Never worked for the government, for the county before.
So there's, Mr. Garber, there's questions that that I still have that we need to answer before we can have an informed discussion on what we think is is the right decision. One of those is confirming even that those certifications were held and were current, and what level the, you know, the comp board was compensating and what level the county was compensating, you know, clearly delineated. So we need to seek that information and make sure and corroborate it, make sure it's accurate, and then we can, I think, have an informed discussion on what we think is is the right the right thing to do here in the fair and again, as importantly, so. Anyone else?
I'm at the, with you, Travis. We've done the, like, the compensation for the rest of the of the county employees, but we really didn't do it. When we tried to back, I guess, when Danny was there, coming up with the whole human resources and the new pay plan, but I guess we didn't set it up for the constitutional officers. And like you said, that's, it's unfortunate that the the salaries are based with, we know a lot of it come from the comp board, and then we supplement all the rest. And I guess, as you know, I put in for that position also, and that's why I pulled out, because I couldn't take that much of a cut in pay, and it was very disheartening for what I was told as well. But like you said, there are other things involved that we need to discuss in probably closed session about payment plan and maybe setting the salaries for all of our accounting employees, especially the department heads and the constitutional officers moving forward.
Yeah, I agree with most of that. We need to, we need to get good information first, and then we can, we can have the discussion, but we need to do that as soon as possible. So I'll get with with our side of the house tomorrow, tell them what we need to find out. And, you know, Ms. Bancroft, Ms. Funkhouser, whatever information you guys can bring to the table through your respective associations on the history of this stuff would be helpful as well.
Will do.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both. And, yeah, we know, well, we knew there were problems. I don't know if any of us knew how many, but we knew we would find stuff. So, man, we appreciate the hard work to this point, and, you know, y'all have our support going forward to make sure we get these things solved, done right, and have, you know, good transparent functioning offices moving forward. So thanks for stepping up. Next up, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals Annual Report. Mr. Schumaker from the Fourth District is on the line with us. If we could get him able to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, give me just a second. I just lost my screen, lost my cheat notes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in compliance with Virginia State Code fifteen dot two dash two three oh eight, Section C, the Board of Zoning Appeals shall submit a report of its activities to the governing bodies or bodies at least once a year. So presented before you this evening is a summary of the BZA's official actions for 2020, our accomplishments and proposed goals for 2021. For our 2020 accomplishments, the Board of Zoning Appeals, along with King William County Planning and Zoning Staff, reviewed Section eighty-six, Article fifteen of the zoning ordinance. The BZA is participating in the zoning ordinance review process as well as the comprehensive plan. On another accomplishment, I would like to acknowledge the BZA members Doris White, Michael Nolan, myself, as well as the 2020 BZA Secretary Krista Cole for achieving their certification or certificate of completion of the Virginia Certified Boards of Zoning Appeals Program. This was a big accomplishment for our team. This training program was very valuable and should be required for all new BZA members. Concerning our 2020 activities, the BZA Board conducted seven regular meetings throughout 2020 and one work session. Out of those meetings, we approved four variance requests and modified one appeals determination. The BZA currently meets regularly every two months, regardless of whether or not there's a variance request or an appeals determination. This has been a great benefit to the board, as these meetings allow for us to receive updates from our Director of Community Development or zoning administrator, and also allows us to network. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to state that our interim Director of Community Development, Sherry Graham, and her staff have been doing a remarkable job. The board relies heavily on their expertise and thanks them for their support and resources. So wrapping up for our 2021 goals, one is to establish approximately one or two joint sessions with the planning commission. I've yet to have a chance to speak with them about this, but pretty sure they'll be on board with this. My thoughts with this would be in conjunction with another goal that we've established, and that's actively participating in the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan review processes. I believe the BZA's experience over the last few years with variance requests could be of value during the zoning review process. The other goal was to request from the Board of Supervisors funds be allocated yearly for continued BZA education and possibly legal counsel. As to the continued BZA education, as I mentioned before, the training we took last year was valuable, and this should be required for all new BZA members. If memory serves me right, the classes cost about $500 per person. It's my understanding that these funds may already be allocated for training under commissions and boards. If not, I would respectfully ask the board to reserve such funds specifically for the BZA training. As to the needing funds for legal counsel, as you may know, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi judicial board, meaning actions are conducted by the board in a court-like proceeding or in a hearing. The BZA acts in quasi judicial, in a quasi judicial role, and on rare occasions may require independent legal counsel, and that basically deals with procedures. This year, the BZA will be gathering specific details on that subject and for possible consideration of later time. Finally, the last goal we have is to have work session, to have a work session to discuss the lessons learned from the Virginia Certified Boards of Zoning Appeals Program class that we took last year. Be a good refresher for everybody on the team. So, Mr. Chairman, this basically wraps it up and concludes the Board of Zoning Appeals Report for 2020. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Schumaker, that's a very good report. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Schumaker?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one. As you know, you are, I guess, the longest people on this board, and this is the first time I've ever gotten a report from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I commend the Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals for bringing this to us. I see that he has followed code and followed it to the T, and I'm very proud of him and his department and for coming up with that. Thank you very much, Benjamin.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Echoing Mr. Greenwood, he's correct. I cannot recall getting this mandated presentation in the past. So, look, even doing the things we're supposed to do, deserve plaudits. So thank you very much, and I look forward to more annual reports in the future, but we also look forward to to hearing from you guys. Case has arrived. You've been great. I emailed Mr. Schumaker with a question about a variance that was done a few months ago, seeking some more information, and he had everything right there ready for me, and I was able to answer a constituent question. So that's much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have infrastructure bonds. We have Mr. Sanderson from Davenport and Company on the line. I see him there. If we can get him ready to speak, I'll go ahead and hand the floor over to him.
There we go. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect. Thank you. Good to be with you all again, albeit a little bit different method. But again, my name is Jimmy Sanderson, and I'm with Davenport and Company, and we have acted as the financial advisor to the county in the past. And and one of the things that we were asked to come and do at a higher, at a higher level than we have before with you, but just give a sense of how infrastructure projects are funded, sort of that process that we go through. And there's a lot of stuff here, Mr. Chairman, and I want to just ask, because I want to be respectful of your time, obviously, but I was thinking maybe fifteen minutes I can run through this. But if you want me to cut it a little bit shorter, I can skip some things, however you want me to to do that.
There is a lot of stuff, and so, yeah, let's let's hem it to fifteen minutes if we can, and then we can maybe do some Q and A after that.
Perfect, perfect. Well, let's flip. I've got the page numbers in the bottom right. Flip to page two. And really, the first question that we want to look at is, you know, do you pay cash for a project or do you fund it with with debt? There's some pros and cons listed here. I think we can all get to that pretty easily. If if we could pay cash for everything, that's something that we we might want to do. That oftentimes is not the case for local governments. It's almost always the case for local governments that you run into a little bit of a cash flow problem there. You could save save interest costs associated with that, but but oftentimes that that puts us in a situation where we can't afford to upkeep critical infrastructure, and oftentimes we have some pressure on other other areas where we are diverting money toward toward capital and might take away from operations. On the debt side of things, obviously, the pros, we can accelerate some infrastructure costs if we want to. You can be proactive on growth and development. Also, it introduces the concept of future generations paying for projects as they use them over time. So if you're financing, you know, forty-year life asset, paying cash for it today would put more of a burden on the citizens that are paying taxes today versus it being paid off over time by by future generations that would use the asset over time. Obviously, it does create a fixed asset or obligation on our books. We've got to make sure we can pay that. We may have to abide by certain covenants, and there are also some costs associated with whenever we borrow money. So flip to page three. And this is what you're doing here now, which is, which is an important thing, and we spent some time over the last few months, or the end of the year, and beginning of this year, looking at some of your your capital planning on the utility side in particular. That's very important to do. You know, from a longer-term perspective, the longer you can plan things out, the better. It helps both boards as well as citizens to understand what those future projects are coming coming that you're going to need to pay for, and it also helps you plan for the revenues that you're going to need in order to pay for them. But you can't do it in a vacuum. Obviously, it's going to be linked to other parts of your budget, too. Oftentimes, the projects you take on are going to be, are going to require some some operational expenses as you move forward. So it's not just the the capital financing, the capital cost that you have, but you've got to understand what the potential additional burdens on your budget might be from what you fund. We talked, we've talked to you before about debt affordability and debt capacity. Debt affordability is really, think about it as a cash flows. How are we going to pay for the projects that we're going to bring on? In particular, if there's if there's a debt component. Debt capacity is a little bit different than that, and that sort of goes to more to best practices. What's the amount of debt that we have outstanding as a jurisdiction? How much of our debt service takes up our total budget? Things of that sort are important to look at whenever you're doing your planning of future projects. The level of your debt that you have, you want to look in particular, debt versus equity. Can we put some equity in there? Obviously, that takes some burden off. A lot of local governments will have a pay-go component to their CIP. We're going to talk a little bit later about the timing and the structure of how that works. And in particular, we're going to talk a little bit about self-supporting debt versus debt that's going to be paid for from taxes. But self-supporting debt, think of it as your utility-type funds. You know, are you generating enough revenue in those funds, in those enterprise funds that they can stand on their own? That's not always the case. And oftentimes, the general fund, general taxes of a jurisdiction will also support those enterprise funds. I'll flip over to page four. So we'll talk a little bit about the different types of debt, tax-supported debt, and how are you going to pay for it? I mentioned a moment ago about, you know, what's your debt service relative to your budget? That's important to look at when you're doing your planning. The principal outstanding, we showed you before, where you look specifically at what is the amount of total debt compared to your assessed value of your jurisdiction? Again, it gives you a gauge of what the total debt burden that you have on your jurisdiction. You know, what's the tax equivalent impact? We did this when we funded the last school financing for you, and we looked at specifically, you know, was there going to be a penny equivalent to the tax rate that you needed to raise in order to pay for the project? And again, my last point there is don't forget about the operating impact that there might be. On the revenue-supported debt, so you can have debt that's supported by certain revenues, in particular on the utility side. Depending upon what you're looking at, there may be a feasibility study that might be required, in particular if you're relying on future revenues to pay for those, pay for those projects. The size of your customer base obviously is important. You've got to also think about reserves, in particular related to future maintenance, if you're bringing on a large project. And then in particular, the last point, you know, again, as I mentioned, not all revenue financings, enterprise fund financings are self-supporting, and oftentimes they require the general fund, I'll call it that way, but the general fund to support it and be a backing of the debt if those revenues aren't sufficient enough to pay the debt service on your debt. Flip over to page five. So here, we'll talk a little bit about matching the project to the security. You know, there's lots of different ways to provide security to lenders in Virginia. We're going to go through these generally for you. It can be a contractual commitment. It can be a pledge of collateral, or it could be just a promise to pay. But in Virginia, we look at a number of different ways. The general obligation bond, which is a full faith and credit pledge, that's the highest quality credit that you can get in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And for most counties like yourself, that would require a referendum voted on by your constituents affirmatively in order to pledge that general obligation pledge. There's one exception that we'll hit on in a minute. The other is a lease revenue bond, which we've also done with the county as well, where you pledge to repay the debt, but it's subject to annual appropriation by your and future boards each year. So you would have to budget for the lease payment, which is the same. Think of that as the same as a debt service payment, but a lease payment. But then you also have the backing of the collateral, the asset that was purchased. The revenue bonds, we hit on that a little bit a moment ago, but again, they can come from a number of different sources. We mentioned in here the Dillon Rule. There are some things that we're only allowed to do what we're allowed under our Virginia Code, and it has to be specifically stated in there. But obviously, utility revenues can be pledged to repay debt. The last one's a moral obligation, which is just simply a promise to pay. There's no collateral, and that obviously has some concern to lenders, because there's not the teeth behind it. But it is, again, just a general promise to pay that's subject to annual appropriation by the current board and future boards. Jump over to page six, and here's one where we'll go through this a little bit more quickly. But there, with respect to general obligation lease revenue bonds, the county could issue a general obligation bond on its own. Again, it would have to be subject to a referendum. There is one exception that we mentioned, and that is through the Virginia Public School Authority. You have borrowed through the VPSA, and when you do do that, that is a pledge of your general obligation of the county, but it does not require a referendum. The standalone lease revenue bonds, again, they're generally paid from tax revenues of the jurisdiction, but they're subject to appropriation each year. It's important that the asset that we use as collateral in those is an essential project. Lenders are going to look at that, obviously. If you were ever to fail to repay it, it's a lease, so you wouldn't lose your asset like you would if you had a mortgage, but you would be excluded from using that facility for some period of time during the lease period, which usually ties out to the length of the debt. But so it has to be typically an essential project. It can be a little bit more expensive than borrowing on a general obligation pledge, but not so much that it's cumbersome to jurisdictions. Again, the asset that we're financing is usually accessed collateral, and this is a very common way that, in particular, counties in Virginia borrow. It's common across the Commonwealth from entities that have no rating to AAA-rated counties in Virginia use this structure. Flip over to page seven. The revenue bonds, again, these can be structured in a number of different ways with respect to what is the revenue that we're talking about, whether that's water and sewer revenues that are going to come in. It's more limited repayment stream, obviously, than a general obligation bond, where you're pledging all the tax revenues, in particular, real estate tax revenues of a jurisdiction, can be a little bit more expensive from an interest rate perspective than a general obligation bond. But that just really depends on the rating that we're looking at or the specific revenues that would be coming in. They're typically used when you want to have certain groups pay for a project. And if you think about it with respect to water and sewer in particular, that's the most common place where we see these revenue bonds. If you want to charge just those users of that service, they would be paying for it from the rates and charges. It also allows you to capture sometimes customers outside of your jurisdiction if they're using your water or sewer systems. The last point down there is, again, we hit on a little bit earlier, but oftentimes, revenues of these utility systems aren't sufficient enough to pay for debt themselves, or at least provide the collateral that we want to get to provide a lender of comfort. And again, in those cases, we'll often have a secondary pledge. Now, it can be a general obligation pledge, or it could just be a moral obligation backstop of the jurisdiction, saying if the utility revenues aren't sufficient to pay the debt, we, the county, are going to make sure that it's paid, whether it's from real estate taxes, whatever revenues you come in, you make that pledge to make that payment. Again, it's subject to annual appropriation by future boards as well. Flip to page, to page eight. Moral obligation bonds, again, this is just one where there's no collateral. It's just a promise to pay. It's a bit more weaker pledge. But again, lenders will look to you as the governing body and future bodies to make an appropriation to pay their debt, even if it's just a moral obligation, meaning, again, no collateral. If you were to ever fail to make that appropriation, the credit markets certainly would penalize the county by charging higher interest rates, or maybe not even giving you loans in the future. So in Virginia, that's taken very seriously. Governing bodies have always been good stewards with respect to if they borrowed money, future boards have appropriated to make those payments. I think there's just been one instance in Virginia where a jurisdiction did not make an appropriation on this type of pledge, and it was one where they financed non-essential assets. It was actually a golf course, and they chose not to appropriate that, those monies, and they were heard in the credit markets because of that. Flip over to page nine. Talk a little bit about who provides security and lending to local governments. The first one is banks, and again, we've done this with King William before. We can go to banks, whether local, regional, or national banks, and they often will lend to local governments. You can do a standalone public bond issue. That's a little bit more expensive doing it on your own, but you certainly could do that. The others are, there's some state programs. We've also done this with King William, whether it's Virginia Resources Authority or the Virginia Public School Authority. Those are state-run programs, agencies of the Commonwealth of Virginia that are set up to help local governments pool their financings together. So they each do a number of financings each year. Lots of jurisdictions come into those financings. It saves them some costs, and obviously, they have higher credit ratings than a lot of jurisdictions, so they can borrow at very low interest rates. The last one is USDA. Rural Development often does borrowings, in particular for utility types of credits, and allow you to borrow for a much longer period of time than you might otherwise. Jump over to page ten. Just hit really quickly what local banks are looking for. They tend to like general obligation bonds a little bit more. It's more secure for them, but they will do revenue types of credits. Oftentimes, they're limited in how far they will go out. I've got down there at the bottom, ten to twelve years. I think that's pretty easy. We can get banks to do that. Once we start asking them to give us fixed rates for fifteen, twenty years, some banks will back out. So you'll get a little bit less interest from banks, and we want to try to get as many institutions to try to bid on your loans when we do that. If you're borrowing less than ten million, you can get a little bit better interest rate. It's called bank qualification, and sometimes that can give us a little bit lower rate. The prepayment provisions are very flexible with banks, much better than the public markets, and even through the state programs. You don't typically need a rating in order to do that. So your cost of borrowing, when we go just to banks, is much lower than if we were to go into the public markets. And so this can be oftentimes a very easy way to get capital to local governments in Virginia without spending a lot of money on cost of issuance. Jump over to page eleven. The standalone public bond issue, we'll jump past this one, Mr. Chairman. But again, this is if you were to go get your own rating, borrow in the public markets by yourself. You can get, you have a lot more discretion on what you want to do, the duration, and what the credit is. But that's an expensive way to borrow on your own when there are other programs available to you. Flip to page twelve. Talk a little bit about the state sponsored programs. Again, VRA and VPSA are the perfect examples of it. The one thing I'll mention about just VPSA, obviously, that's only for schools. That's just the Virginia Public School Authority. So that's, if we want to borrow for schools, that's where we go, to VPSA. VRA can do just about everything else that a local government can do in Virginia, and oftentimes is an entity that we would take any types of projects to absent schools. Again, they have high credit ratings. There is an application process. We do need to come up with some type of collateral package that we would need to take to VRA, and whether that's, again, the collateral that we're financing oftentimes is the way we're doing it, even in utility projects. The, they're not high on funding raw land, but I don't believe you've got that right now. But there's no ongoing disclosure requirement with VRA from a public perspective. They do charge a fee, but that's a small fee that's charged to everybody across the board for have access and just their ability to run the program. Again, I mentioned that the pooled issuance, the fact that you and other jurisdictions would be going in together, does offer some economies of scale. And again, they've got some flexibility. You can borrow as long as thirty years if you'd like to. Does allow for some borrowing of interest during construction if that were important to you. Flip to page thirteen. Just a comment on rural development. Rural Development would be a great way to borrow. In particular, they'll allow you to borrow up to forty years at very good interest rates. One of the things that we often do is we'll compare the USDA interest rates to VRA, for example, versus a bank loan, so you can get a sense of what the differences are between them. One of the things that, when oftentimes jurisdictions will look at this and borrow for forty years, and you get a very low interest rate or low annual cost on that, meaning your debt service each year is much lower because you're financing it for forty years, but you pay much more interest over the life of that loan than you would if you were to borrow for twenty or fifteen years, for example. So the forty years can be helpful in, from a cash flow perspective, getting your annual payment down, but it does add up when you're paying back debt over a longer period of time like that. One of the tricky things with rural development is an extensive application process often can take a while to close on their loan. You do have to complete the project before they'll let you close on the loan. So you will have to go through an interim process that we do, where we go to banks, like we talked about earlier. We'll get a short-term loan from the bank to build the project. Then the loan gets taken out by rural development once the project is completed. Page fourteen, last page. Timing and for the details of that addition, it's one of the things that we wanted to talk to you a little bit about, was when to borrow and when you might need to. And I think you're just in that starting process now, but you certainly need to look at getting your funding in place well in advance of executing any construction contract or purchase contract for equipment. You want to make sure you've got the money and you can afford it before that happens. And so oftentimes, you'll look at with your engineers when you're going to start on a project and when they're going to be bid out, and we'll time the borrowing around that time. You can, the second bullet out there I've got, you can't borrow, in particular because we're borrowing on a tax-exempt basis, you can't borrow for projects that are, you know, five years out. And oftentimes, you wouldn't want to do that because it's going to cost you more in interest costs leading up to that. But you can generally borrow for capital projects that you have over a three-year period. You have to be able to spend that money during that three-year period. And there are some milestones that you have to hit, and that's why I put that note in here, that we really need to talk to bond counsel, as your tax counsel, about when we have to make sure we're spending the money. And again, I mentioned this earlier, but again, VRA, for example, they borrow two to three times a year. So we want to time when you need money to start building your projects as around when they are going to be in the market and can make money available to you. So as you start your planning process, these are the things that we would work with your staff to come back and help you time out exactly when you need money, and then when we could go, whether it's the banks or whether it's the Virginia Resources Authority. The last point was really, you know, how long should we borrow for? Meaning, how long, what's the duration of our loan, and how long is it going to take us to pay it back? And sort of the first thing that we look at is, we don't want to finance an asset longer than the useful life of the asset. So if it's a fifteen-year piece of equipment, we don't want to finance it for thirty years, because then you're paying, obviously, on the debt well past the useful life of the asset. On a tax-exempt borrowing, you're allowed to borrow up to one hundred and twenty percent of the useful life of the asset. But I think you should generally think of it as keying the life of the asset with the borrowing. Now, oftentimes, on utility projects, some of these things have forty, fifty-year-plus lives. And so you theoretically could, as I talked about with USDA, you could borrow up to forty years, but that may not be the best thing for you, because the longer you borrow, the more interest you're going to be paying over time. So it's tying the useful life of the asset. But the other important part of it is, what is the affordability of the jurisdiction? So if we finance an asset over ten years, if we can afford it, we have the revenues that are available to pay that, then obviously, that's going to be the best thing for you, taking into account this project, but also knowing what you've got down the road. And that's when we talked a little bit earlier about the multi-year planning. If we know that we've got to borrow for a project three years from now, we might not want to set up a financing right now to pay for an asset and pay it back over five years, because it's going to be a much higher annual payment that we're going to need to make. And so we've got to take into account both the project that you're looking at right now, but we, the best we can, we want to look at what you have down the future when making that decision about the length of time to finance an asset. And again, my last point there is, again, this is something that we would work sort of hand-in-hand with staff in looking at your different projects, when your engineers believe they're going to need money and the timing of them. And, Mr. Chairman, that's oftentimes when we would come back to you, as we have before, showed you a plan of finance, different options on borrowing, length of times, and what that means from a cash flow perspective, and how are you going to look at paying for those projects? So let me stop there, Mr. Chairman. Last page is just questions and comments. It's a lot of stuff. Put this in a way, hopefully, that you can take it home and digest it a little bit. Um, I, I, I put this in a way hopefully that you can, can take it home and digest it a little bit if you'd like to as well. And, and we're always here to come back uh, and talk to your board anytime that you, you need us to. But I'm happy to take any questions that, that you have now.
Anybody from the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Sanders?
Not at this point.
Uh, Mr. Sanders and Ed Warren, uh, the USDA in particular, do those stay pretty stable as far as administrations, as the political uh, winds change? Do they stay fairly stable in your experience?
They do, um, they do. It's been a program that's been around a long time. Uh, and I think it, I think it tends to stay out of the, uh, the political side of things. Um, some of the newer programs that got implemented over the last, last year or so, um, uh, some of those did have some of the political side to it. And um, but the USDA is a program that's been around, they're, they're, you're dealing with local people. Um, so that's, that's also very helpful. The same, same folks that we've dealt with for a long time, they don't, they don't change over.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. Uh, you always have uh, great information for us and you've uh, you've always steered us in the right direction. So we appreciate this presentation tonight. Um, you know, as we move forward with any projects like this, I know we'll be back to talk about it some more.
Appreciate it. Good to see you all.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
We've got no older unfinished business. So we've got item 10A, uh, under new business. Our first is to conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance oh one dash 21, which is to amend chapter 78, uh, which is the utility fees schedule. Mr. Hudgens, our interim county administrator is shepherding this. So we can get Mr. Hudgens on to uh, give us as a public a primer and then we will conduct a public hearing.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, this is a pretty uh, simple uh, ordinance fee schedule amendment. Um, what we are proposing is to uh, merely cut some obsolete um, fees out of what is in our ordinance, uh, namely those that have to do with HRSD, um, which operates our sewer system now. And uh, we have no control over those fees. So we're proposing to cut those out of our ordinance and then add in um, fees that have to do um, with offsetting costs associated with uh, planning and building big new developments. Um, so no rate change, no connection fee change. Um, but add in planner view fees and um, hyder meter rental fees.
Anybody from the questions for Mr. Hudgens before we open the public here? Okay, uh, since there's none, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Same as public comment earlier, individuals, three minutes. Uh, five minutes, if you're representing a group, please state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin speaking. If you're representing a group, please state so before you begin. Uh, same as before, also, if you are on the phone, star nine to raise your hand. If you are uh, on, online, please message Mr. Wolf in the chat and he will get you unmuted so that you can speak. Go ahead and do a first call. We'll get it open and I'll give everybody about 60 seconds. If we don't get anything, I'll, I'll do a second call. So the public hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman, would you have one person so far that would like to speak? It's uh, Mr. Shoemaker.
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick question. What are planning review fees? What is that uh, exactly?
I'll hand that over to Mr. Hudgens.
Uh, that would be when a uh, new development, new subdivision is proposed and they are presenting and submitting plans for an entire development's uh, mainline installation or mainline uh, to the subdivision. Um, what the county does, we s- take them in, but then we in turn give them to our engineer consultants who charge us to review them.
All right, that concludes the first 60-second call. I'll do one more. If we don't have any at the end of that, I will go ahead and conclude the public here. Once again, message Mr. Wolf or star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, and that will conclude the public hearing on uh, ordinance oh one dash 21. Um, so board members, at the conclusion of the public hearing, I'll take a motion considering ordinance oh one dash 21.
Mr. Chair, I, I'll make that motion of ordinance zero one dash 21.
Move to approve. Okay.
Yeah.
Hudgens, that was a motion to approve, right? Yes, okay. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Warren?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hudgens?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
I. Item 10B, it's resolution 21 dash oh seven. There's a public hearing attached to this one as well. Ms. Jerryl, and you're, you're up on this one. Am I correct in that we do have a public hearing before we consider this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Um, do you want to go ahead and, and tee this one up for us?
Good evening. Tonight's resolution 21 dash oh seven is presented to the board for consideration and for public hearing to reappropriate capital improvement plan balance at year end 2020. We have a balance of $633,463 from prior year's capital fund balance that I would like to, to request be appropriated to spend in FY 2021. Including in tonight's agenda packet is a summary of the capital needs projects to allocate these funds. And are there any questions about those projects?
Yeah, Natasha, I'm uh, I know I asked uh, prior to about the uh, West Point Pavilion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we put the 150,268 before we went back. Uh, is this saying that we are still going to spend this for the West Point Pavilion?
This money has already been.
If they need it.
Yes, we, this, that one exactly, the 150 has already been spent and sent to West Point for completion of the project. When we spent that, when we did that, we had talked to our auditors and we had explained to them that this was something that the, the board had uh, voted on with a resolution in 2020 to spend that, those funds. But when the auditors noticed that the job had not been completed, they had told us that we could not have that expense show in 2020's um, fiscal year financials. So then we had to move everything forward so that it is an expense in 2021. They clarified that, that when projects are not, if we don't have this, the goods in hand or the project has not been complete, we cannot accrue it.
This is one of those things that was discussed in the findings on the, uh, as part of the CAFER. So yeah.
Yes, exactly.
It's already been uh, sent, but the timing of the expenditure means that we need to reflect it on this fiscal year's budget. And again, we've already discussed, you know, in, in general this, the reason that we're bringing it up again is because, um, remember, we've got to have the public hearing in order to do uh, this, the size of a, a budget amendment. So it's not necessarily new money. It's, it's money that's already been appropriated. It just needs to be moved to reflect more accurately when it's been expended.
Yes, it's already in the capital fund on hold, I would, I guess the best way to say it.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to do the public hearing uh, dance one more time. So individuals, three minutes. Uh, those representing a group, five minutes. Please state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin speaking. If you're representing a group, please say so uh, before you begin speaking. We'll open the public hearing now. Star nine, if you're on the phone, message Mr. Wolf in the chat. If you'd like to be heard, we'll do a round one 60-second call beginning now. All right, last call, one more 60-second call. Anybody that wishes to speak, message Mr. Wolf in the chat, star nine if you're on the phone. A minute goes by very slowly when there's nothing in.
It goes by so long when they're talking.
Yeah, right. I've got a timer running on this and I'm like, it's no way this hasn't been a minute yet.
I think your chair has to sing a song when it's like a.
You don't, you don't want that happening. You don't like, remember it has to be, you're going to be hearing Daniel Tiger in the background. Well, I heard somebody get a message, but I don't think it was us, was it, Mr. Wolf?
Sir.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead and close uh, the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion from the board in consideration of resolution 21 dash oh seven.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Lawrence, call the roll, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hudgens?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Warren?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
I. All right, next up, uh, Mr. Jerryl's still with us, FY 22 capital funding needs.
Before you, as a summary of some of the needs projects that have come forward working through the budget process for fiscal year 2022 for capital improvement plan. This information is to inform the board only, no action is needed from the board. Fire and rescue, $60,000 to fund capital needs for volunteer fire and rescue for West Point and Mango Hick, 30,000 each. $78,000 to purchase turnout gear for safer grant projects for King William County Fire and Rescue. $30,000 to purchase a brush truck for King William County Fire and EMS grant available for application with county funding 10%. $30,000 to fund King William County Fire and EMS Life Packs and Lucas Devices. There is a grant available, available for application with the county to match 50% for those. We also were considering a lease purchase of an engine and ambulance to be funded from the EMS Recovery Fund for $150,000 annual payment over seven years. Vehicle replacement. Vehicle replacement total of 199,950. That would include three law enforcement cruisers to include upfitting with equipment and one four-by-four facilities vehicle. The sheriff's office has supplied me with the current vehicle inventory. 57% of the vehicles in sheriff's fleet have over 100,000 miles on them. Radio replacement, we're looking at $230,000 each year for the next three years. And that, that would replace seven, I'm sorry, radio replacement using a seven-year radio replacement cycle, 46 radios a year at $5,000 apiece. And then the water project identified in the master utility bond, uh, utility plan. These need, these uh, needs would be funded by utility bond estimate, $6,761,328. We also would like to review what our water and sewer funds can actually, the money that we can distribute to this plan also, this uh, project. And we're in the process of uh, kind of looking at those fees and, and what we're generating currently with revenues and possibly what, you know, what the changes with the revenue, what the increase would be once this project was complete. Parks and Recreation, 100,000 to fund paving at 360 complex, 8,000 to fund fencing around the soccer field at 360 complex, 15,000 to fund purchase of a lawnmower for the park complex. The juvenile building, general repairs at the juvenile building, 150,000 to fund gutting and renovating the building and an additional 150,000 to fund purchase of an office trailer to relocate staff during renovation. And we were thinking with that purchase of the office trailer that once that project is complete, that could actually maybe be moved over to the sheriff's office for him to have an area for uh, training and things like that, too. And then the final list is the miscellaneous capital needs. 100,000 for HVAC replacements at the facilities complexes, 250 for station one parking lot repairs and signage, 12,000 to complete carpet replacement in the administration office, 50,000 for McAllister Building renovation to include flooring, windows and painting, 30,000 for 360 complex siding replacement, 175 for remaining buildings that need roof replacement, which are the courthouse, animal shelter and 360 complex. Are there any questions?
Natasha, the uh, paving at that 360 complex, didn't the upper Mattupna tribe uh, pave that for us?
This would be.
Is that correct?
Yeah, they did take part of that to one side that, but the other part over closer to our building, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Did you, could you hear that?
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna wrap it, are they gonna wrap it around the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Natasha, this is a minor thing, sort of. I mean, 15,000 is not minor, but I remember in the last few years where we purchased a diesel John Deere lawnmower. And we turned that over, if I remember correctly, to parks at that point. What happened to that?
I.
Mr. Hudgens, let me, let me get you a pause. If you're gonna, I might want to come to the mic if you're gonna um, speak. I can, I can hear you, but it's kind of.
Sorry. Uh, right now, the nice new mower is being used by utilities. Um, and then we have an older mower that is on its last legs um, at the park and also used at the 360 complex. Um, we're proposing to have two working mowers for the county.
Okay, just wondering what, what happened to that one? And it couldn't be that. I know I've only been on the board five years.
No, no, that was still.
It couldn't be much longer than that.
That was great.
The, I, I was under the uh, assumption that the Little, uh, Little League were pretty much cutting everything at the ballpark there now. I guess they're just cutting the fields, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the Little League has a use agreement where they maintain fields that they have controlled access to. Um, but that is only a portion of the park overall.
All right, this would also be used at our uh, property at the 360 complex as well.
Mr. Hudgens, we, when you are speaking, you got to get closer to that mic because it is weak.
Sorry. Um, this would also be, whatever's used at the park would also be shared with the 360 complex and the now soccer field behind it.
Okay.
I had a question about the, I mean, I said, that sounds like an awful lot of money just to pave the little back area behind that 360 complex. Does it also cover the uh, the fire department so that when people come there to vote, they don't have to go through all that mud and stuff?
Which are we talking about? Uh, which are we talking about?
A hundred thousand dollars to fund the paving at the three sixty complex.
That is separate from the two fifty that is being called out for the Station One. We have not gotten a quote for the three sixty complex. But based on what we are being quoted at the Station One parking lot, that is what we came up with, the hundred thousand for the three sixty complex.
All right.
At what, at what point, uh, do we make a decision on these expenditures?
They will be brought to you when we do our work session.
Okay, that's so.
And at that time, I can give you more of an idea of how we can fund them. If we'll be able to use existing capital funds, general funds. Water and sewer, things like that, the parks and rep, but at that time I can give you a better idea.
And certainly for some of these, I'd like to, like to hear about any Plan Bs. Especially, that's a fancy lawnmower, fifteen thousand dollars.
It's, yeah, I asked that before, Ed, it's, it's a diesel, it lasts like twenty five years.
Apparently not.
Well, they've got one new one, apparently new.
A good one's still good.
Yeah.
Okay.
One that was old when they purchased that one. I, I questioned that when it came up the last time. And it being a diesel and a John Deere, you're gonna pay for. Well, I have a, uh, zero turn sixty inch deck commercial. And six years ago, I paid eleven thousand dollars for it, it's not even diesel. Yeah, so, yeah, fifteen thousand is going right.
Yes, am I? Oh, go ahead.
If, if I could, I'd like to, I just, I was just finishing up with a, uh, social, social services meeting, uh, prior to this, and I had. Notes everywhere, uh. The payment of bills, that's directly, uh, related to the social services. And under that. Uh, it's saying Department of Social Services, uh, under payment of bills, a hundred forty nine thousand two hundred and six dollars. I just found it, I've been struggling to find it, but, uh, in our meeting tonight. Uh, January, uh, payment of bills for social services was actually. One hundred and three thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and two cents. And I asked the question two or three times and they were sure of those numbers.
I can go ahead and.
Natasha, I think she's.
We can compare tomorrow. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, she's gonna call, she's gonna call you tomorrow, so any information that, that you have that can, you know, help her out and help us, I'd greatly appreciate it.
When the board.
I'm sorry.
The information, I'm sorry, they, uh, their payroll is also included in that. Their payroll and any of the taxes that are due. For the payroll are also included in those.
Yeah, when, when I asked her that question, uh, she did, she, you know, she did not know, but I just thought, she's gonna give you a call tomorrow.
Yeah, we've been working together on a lot of different things, so that's not.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you. And I'm sorry about that, but, uh, I missed the opportunity earlier. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions on this capital? Okay, so, yeah, it was gonna be, I look forward to, to looking at what funding mechanisms are available to us, um. You know, grants, revenues, reserve funds, um, carryover funds, whatever the case may be. So, uh, yeah, looking forward to learning more about what. Opportunities we have to get these projects funded. So thanks for bringing it to our attention, though. And, um, it's always a, always quite a list, ever growing. All right, administrative matters in your, uh, your board packet has some information from VDOT, from, I think, Bay Aging and, uh, so. Uh, Mr. Hodgens, is there anything you wanted to highlight in here or just general FYI in the packet?
General FYI.
Very good. Um, okay, so on to Board of Supervisors comments, and I'll do what I did last time and try not to miss anybody this time, but I'll just go in order as you appear on my screen. So we're starting, Mr. Garber.
Uh, yeah, this is kinda off the beaten path, but, uh, we, we got a, uh. Mealstax report and it just, I just looked at it and, uh, this is all about the fourth district. Uh, it, it looks like eighteen, somewhere around eighteen of those twenty seven people that are paying, or in the fourth district. Uh, we have three strip malls, we have three banks, food line, advanced auto, Napa Auto Repair, Commerce Park. Uh, in industrial Fountain Blue, industrial park, park, uh. Uh, Rennie's Fast Mart, uh, seven major subdivisions. Uh, one complete sawmill farm, another one that will, construction will begin very soon. We have Nestle Parina, all this in the fourth district. And, uh, we're, we're in the medical, in the middle of a critical period of time right now. We are. Doing a new comp plan, we're in the middle of, uh, revamping the zoning ordinances. And the fourth district has absolutely no representation whatsoever on the planning commission. And I would like for us to get together and decide, uh, what we can do. I know King and Queen has. Two, uh, members per district. I think that would be a good fit for, for, uh, King William. We could keep the existing members and make, make each district equal. And if we decide to do that, then if there is a opening that we cannot fill. Keep it open until we can get some, uh, from that district, but in the fourth district, uh, we need somebody. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Mr. Greenwood, you're next.
Okay, well, now since Mr. Garber brought that up, uh, I was gonna bring it up in work session, cause this is just comment period here for us. But anyway, now that he's brought it up, I agree with him. And like I said, uh, before we ended the year last year at Planning Commission, I was gonna. Have a committee created to discuss, uh, how that was. And the thing was way back in the day, I guess, when you and I started, Travis, so. Ten years ago, there was a nine to eleven member board, but the thing was, it was so big. And it costs so much, that was one of the things we cut, but, uh, and the other thing was, it was all, uh, at large. I think we, at, at, at minimum need to at least. Mandatory make the planning commission one, one person per district mandatory. And then, uh, of course, the last person is the board supervisor position, but if we can do two members, that, uh. Probably would be better, but I don't know, like I said, that's another thing I talked about some other meetings, we don't have a lot of money, and that's gonna add a lot of money for a double. And that board will be bigger than our board, so, um, I'd, I'd like to talk about it in a future, uh, uh, work session. Cause that is the board of supervisors purview. We decide how many people are on the board, we decide who is on the board. And I agree with Mr. Garber, it should be now that our county's growing so much, it should be mandatory that there's at least one member per district. And since, uh, for people that don't know, uh, first district doesn't have a representation because they have their own planning commission, and they have their own everything up in West Point. So it works out good. There's four, second district, third district, fourth district, fifth district. And the one board supervisor member which makes up the five members now, but I think we should mandatorily make the ordinance or. Uh, something that says that states it's mandatory one per district, as Mr. Garber said. That's the district that has most of the commercial and all the businesses, and they have no say at what goes on in the planning commission, so. And I always wanted to thank everybody coming. It looks like we had a lot of participants. I saw over eighty people in here. Um, I still don't know if something's wrong with Zoom, cause I, I find it hard to believe that all these people are in here, and I've had people talk to me. That say they want to talk and they can never get through, so I don't know if there's a, a technical glitch. Cause, uh, we wait and we wait and we wait, nobody checks in. With seventy four people, I find it hard to believe that only one person wanted to speak. Oh, and I wanted to mention something about that, too. Uh, that person really should speak and he should speak, Mr. Carter, you should speak. Come to the planning commission meeting. That was a item that probably needs to be discussed at planning commission in our meetings next week, so. We would appreciate you coming to our public comment period and state your case for us, cause, uh, that comes to the planning commission before it goes to board of supervisors. And thanks, everybody, for coming. Thanks, uh, um, everybody for speaking their piece and the new, uh. Reports that we had from the, uh, uh, zoning appeals, that was great, and the new treasurer and the new, uh, commissioner of revenue. Thank you very much, and everybody have a good week.
Stephen, I know it's not necessarily orthodox, but do you mind if I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does planning commission still get a per diem for meetings?
Yes, that's the problem. That's why we can't afford it, cause.
I was wondering what the concern about cost was, and I couldn't remember. I know we had done a lot of those, but, uh, you know, planning commission is a lot of work, so I.
Right, and that's another thing, uh, some people would be willing to do it voluntarily, maybe one could be paid, but that, that's another thing, that's what we have to discuss. That's why I was saying, two people probably, we couldn't afford it, but the one person we already have already, so. Yeah, that's what we.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Hodges?
Good evening. Uh, I don't have a whole lot of, just one thing, the first district, I prepared an email to Joyce McGowan dealing with the, uh, brick pavers. At four, at thirty and thirty three, they're in terrible shape. And they need to do something, either take the brick out and, and pave it or put pavers in there. And, and I don't, I didn't see it unless I overlooked it on, on some of her jobs coming up. And that's, other than, uh, glad that we had that many on Zoom, uh, sorry that they can't get through, uh. It's probably more of logistics of operating Zoom, because a lot of folks still have not, you know, gotten into, even though y'all are explaining it in detail. But glad they all came out and thank you, and y'all have a good week.
Mr. Moran?
Yes, good evening. Uh, just wanna say thank you for the openness, Ms. Bancroft and Ms. Frank Hauser. We look forward to your, if not monthly, then certainly. Just having you here and, and available for questions and, and comments is fantastic. I, not picking on Mr. Greenwood or the planning commission, but there are authorities and commissions and boards that don't get paid anything, so. I'd like to look into that as well, if we're, if it's an affordability issues, maybe some people want to volunteer their time. I'll leave it at that. Uh, just wanna say in a positive note, uh, especially in District Five and some District Four, I'm seeing a lot of orange bags on the side of the road. I applaud the, uh, the citizens that are getting out there and picking up their trash. If we just had people go outside on the edge of their property and pick up, this place would be a whole lot better looking. So I appreciate everyone that's out there picking up trash as we get into springtime. It's fantastic looking. Please get out, uh, sign up for your vaccine. There's a new vaccinate dot Virginia dot gov. It's no longer through the Three Rivers Health District, it's now through the, the state, so. Find somebody to help you if you don't have access. Obviously, you do have access to be on here tonight, but friends and family that may not get them, uh, signed up. Vaccinate dot Virginia dot go. Thanks.
Thanks a lot. Um, yeah, thanks for the, the great participation tonight. Um, you know, i- if, if people are really having a hard time getting through, if you wanted to speak tonight, but. Able, please reach out to us and, and let us know so that we can try to figure that out. Um, you, we did, we were able to successfully get a couple of people on, so I feel like it's, it's working, and I'm trying to give ample time for people to, you know, access the chat or access. Um, you know, through their phones to be able to, to get their hands raised, but if you are actually having that issue, I'd, I'd love to know it so that we can. Document it and try to get it fixed. So reach out to myself or reach out to Mr. Wolf. Through, uh, you know, preferably through, through email, I think, for both of us, uh, so that we can try to sort this, this out if it is a real issue. I did wanna take a minute to thank, uh, Chief Reeve, Sheriff Walton and our first responders for, uh, being out and so diligent over these past two, uh, winter storms. Uh, we were, you know, fortunate to, I think, uh, avoid the worst of it, um, but I, there were still plenty of areas that were, that were pretty bad. Thanks to them for keeping the roads clear, responding to calls, uh, responding to any accidents that would have happened, and then. Uh, also, if there's anybody from Dominion on here, a big thanks to the lineman who got that power backup as, as quickly as they could, and Rappahannock Electric as well. That's all I have for tonight. Um, we look forward to seeing you all, uh, seeing you all again, uh, at our work session coming up in a couple of weeks. Uh, we do have a closed meeting that we're going to enter, and I think Mr. Moran has the motion for that. Uh, this room, uh, is going to stay open and will return to conclude the meeting once we're, once we're done with the closed session. Um, so if you wanna stay on, you're more than welcome to, and, and we'll be back in just a minute. So, uh, Mr. Moran, do you have that motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia. I move that the board of supervisors convene in closed meeting to consider. A matter related to prospective industry, business or industry or expansions of existing businesses or industry.
Got a motion?
So, man.
We've got a motion, need a second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Very good. That's all right. Uh, any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
I. Now, Mr. Wolf, I know you have a room set up. Are you gonna handle that for us, or do we need to navigate somewhere?
No, sir, I'm gonna set that up right now, and, uh, each of you will get an invitation to, uh, move to a new room.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, give us a few moments, Steve, you're going in as well, is that correct, uh, for him to get to his computer and get logged into the meeting? And then he will.
My, my question also, how are they gonna communicate it?
I'm sorry.
How are they gonna communicate the link or whatever?
It pops up.
Yeah, it should be a pop-up that should come.
People still here?
Really?
Wow.
Who are the, who are the people?
Thirty three.
Really?
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Well, thanks for sticking with us, everybody. So, um, all right, we'll go ahead and reconvene in, uh, in open session. I will entertain a motion, uh, for SR one.
Mr. Chair, I will make it motion of it to approve SR one.
Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence, could you call her all, please?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
I. Uh, no appointments, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So, no, make a motion and we adjourn.
I think it was about five of those.
All right, Ms. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
I. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
All right.
I would say drive safe, but hopefully you're mostly home. Take care.
All right.
All right.